I'd like to call the Village Board for Tuesday, October eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Village Board meeting to order. Roll call, please.
President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Service.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Atkinson is excused. Trustee Krueger.
Here.
And trustee Flukie.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
(inaudible)
Please remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number five, action items. Five A, received, discussed. Presentation from Rukert Milkie about the capital improvement plan and proposed utility rate increases. Mr. Rickert.
All right, so we have Kevin Wagner with us here today, who's been assisting us. They initially started with our initial conventional rate case for our water utilities. It started back in two thousand and twenty-two. Following that, we kind of mended that into doing our first phase of our capital improvement plan. That was completed last year. Our next step is, is looking at how do we fund those capital improvement projects? And then coupled on top of that, as you guys may be aware, from the last two board meetings, we had essentially, we had new water come in Green Bay, water come and talk about the different rate structures that they're going to have over the course of the next couple of years, which really impacts our, you know, essentially cash flows and revenues because our expenditures, sorry, impacts our revenues. So our expenditure, so revenues are going to have to start to look at different ways as to how we're going to fund our utilities and make sure that we stay sustainable. So with that, Kevin's here, I do have a presentation that I'm going to get pulled up on the screen. And I'm showing something a little bit different. Maybe it's just a little bit lagged. I was hoping to get it to show full screen. Let me try this a little bit different. All right, so with that, I'll get started. Kevin Wagner from Rukert Milkie's here, and he'll just work his way through his presentation. I'll advance to the next slide, so we'll jump right into it. So, get this in front of you, Kevin. Seek.
Thank you very much. So I've been working with the village on, throughout these projects. The driver for this in the first place is that the village has transmission main and it's being paid off in two thousand and twenty-six. Annual payments for that main were approximately five hundred and seventy thousand dollars annually. That would be being covered within the village rates. And so the thought was to take this money and start to roll it over to pay for water main that will be starting to fail, hit, reach its end of life in coming years. And so as part of the Phase One of the CIP, we looked at assessing the water main throughout the village and found that approximately thirty-five percent of the, of the main was put in, in nineteen seventy or earlier. Another thirty percent was put in between nineteen seventy-one and nineteen eighty, and the remaining third has been installed since nineteen eighty-one. And so the village is going to see about sixty-five percent of the main hitting its end of life, starting in about twenty forty, and then going through about twenty seventy-five or so. And so this is a lot of infrastructure that was put in initially, and the village has been more of a maintenance mode to this point, and now they're looking at having to replace the infrastructure. And so the sanitary sewer is on a similar timeline because a lot of it was installed at the same time as the water main. And so the water main was seen to be the key driver for the first phase of this analysis. So I'm going to go through a couple of the current village practices. So from a roadway perspective, the village has three main maintenance techniques that it uses. The first would be a pulverize and pave program where they look at replacing asphalt that's hit its end of life, where typically the asphalt's in poor condition, but the road base is still good. And so you'll start, you might just start to see alligator cracking or potholing, but that's where this would take place. The mill pave program is more for areas where the surface layer of asphalt's in poor condition, and that gets replaced, but the lower layer is still in good shape. So it's a much cheaper alternative to just replace that top layer. And then for maintenance program, the village looks at doing crack filling and slurry filling. And so typically your new roadways will start to see cracking probably about year, by year five. And if you fill those cracks immediately when they appear, you can keep water from getting into your roadways, and you can really extend the life of your road. So it's the cheapest and most effective thing to do for roadways where you can get another ten or fifteen years out of a road. And then from a reconstruction perspective, this is typically when a road is either completely failed, or you're looking at doing utility replacements underneath the roadway where the trench for a couple of utilities might take up three quarters of the roadway, or you're doing some sort of widening or alteration. From a water perspective, the village does regular inspections and maintenance on its facilities, and those are typically scheduled on a regular basis as determined by the DNR, the PSC, or DNR, I should say. Addressing water main breaks that have occurred, which is typically the main indication where you, you may have mains that are starting to fail. And then those have been the key aspects from a water main perspective. And so at this point, the village is looking to transition from just addressing issues that arise to actually replacing those water main. And based on that Phase One CIP analysis, the village is looking at around forty million dollars of main to be replaced in the next forty-five years. From a sanitary perspective, the village does regular inspection and maintenance on its SCADA systems, which are used to control and, and monitor lift stations and other sanitary controls. They look at inflow and infiltration repairs, which is typically where a main manhole or a lateral gets cracks in it and water starts to intrude. And then when you have a storm event, you'll get groundwater that goes into those mains, and you'll see spikes and flows that would go to new water that the village has to pay for, for treatment, even though it's just storm water. So typically, addressing those issues pays for itself over time. And again, with the sanitary sewer hitting its end of life, this is where the village is looking to move into replacement schedule instead of just maintenance as it has been. And so they coordinate a lot, most of these replacements with the roadway CIP projects. From a storm sewer perspective, storm sewer is a little different in that water and sanitary are both closed systems versus storm sewer will have outfalls, ponds, other things above ground. So the village is looking at culver inspections, pond improvements and inspections, and other maintenance. And then the village storm sewer ages may vary because for water main and sanitary sewer, typically you will install it and it'll be in the ground until you're ready to replace it, often due to age or because something significant has changed. Versus storm sewer will vary based on if you have a lot of improvements upstream, or you may need to, or downstream, you may need to increase the size of the sewer. You'll see a lot more variation in flows. A sanitary sewer may be eight, ten, twelve inches versus a storm sewer can be a thirty-six or a forty-two inch. So if you see increases in development, that has a major impact on the storm sewer size. So a lot of storm sewer will get replaced on a, on a less consistent basis. For the first, the goals of Phase One were to take a look at assessing the current water and roadway infrastructure, as those were the two kind of guiding factors. Identify the critical water main replacement over the next fifteen years, and then assess the importance of the different roadway corridors and related utilities. We took a look at any water main that was hitting, hitting its end of life that was installed up to that nineteen seventy, or nineteen seventy timeframe, I believe. So looked at what the future water needs to be for the village to try to get an idea of what the overall magnitude of that was, and that's where that forty million dollar cost came from. And then developing a ten-year CIP starting in two thousand and twenty-seven and forecasting how the village would fund that from a water perspective. So for the second phase of the CIP, we're building on that, looking at refining the costs of sanitary and storm sewer corridor costs. And then we wanted to incorporate the sanitary and storm utility projects that were outside of the CIP itself into the funding and try to help determine how that would be funded. And so once those improvements were added in, we looked at forecasting the sanitary utility needs, the storm utility needs, and then updating the water forecast to account for how the, the CIP had been modified and changed. And then we updated that ten-year CIP starting in two thousand and twenty-seven. So for the long-term CIP plan, we're still looking at that two thousand and twenty-seven to two thousand and thirty-six window. And so looking at the projects that are specifically in those roadway corridors, so this doesn't include water facilities or sewer facilities or storm ponds. The costs within that ten-year window averaged to about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for water, about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for sanitary sewer, just over a million dollars for roadway, and about four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year for storm sewer. And for storm sewer specifically, we shifted a lot of the more expensive storm sewer projects further out on the, on the CIP to try to reduce the impact from a storm utility perspective, because there will be significant rate increases required for that. So our intent was to try to soften that as much as possible. So then looking at forecasting for all three of the utilities, we looked at what the operations costs have been historically and what they will be going forward. We looked at trying to establish a cash reserve for all three of the utilities at about forty percent of the typical operating expenses. So that if something major comes up, you have the, the funds to take care of it. And then we looked at how the rate increases would be scheduled and what the magnitude would be for each of the different utilities. So starting off with the water utility funding forecast, so as you heard, Green Bay Water Utility has a seventeen percent increase in two thousand and twenty-four, which works out to be a roughly fourteen and a half percent increase for the village that will be passed through, that the village really has no control over. And my understanding is that the, the city tends, plans to continue to do rate increases every five years. So we assume there'll be a significant rate increase from the city every five years going forward. And then what we looked at is trying to increase, do the village increases so that they be staggered between them. So with the PSC, the village has to go back for a new rate case every five years if they want to increase their rates. And then the, the option to do smaller incremental rate increases between, based on the PSC's calculations. So for water, there's only one alternative provided because the PSC will largely dictate exactly what can be done with those increases. So you'll see in green, the anticipated city increases that'll be coming through. So there's one this year that will fully go into effect next year. There's one that we anticipate in two thousand and thirty, and one we anticipate in two thousand and thirty-five. So looking at two thousand and twenty-four, the three percent for the rate increase is the percentage of the rate increase from Green Bay that'll be taken into account. This year versus the remainder of that is in two thousand and twenty-five. So it's a fourteen and a half percent increase overall. So roughly three percent and twelve percent in those two years. And then the village would look to do incremental increases in twenty-six and twenty-seven as the PSC allows, and then go back for a traditional rate case in two thousand and twenty-nine. Looking at water service charges, this shows a rough comparison between some of the other communities in the area. And so the village of Ashwabanon is on the low end on the water utility side of things. Green Bay is a little bit more, as is Bellevue. And then DePere significantly more, as is Howard and Alloway.
The one thing, not to cut Kevin off, that I want to draw attention to is, I know a lot of times we look at spreadsheets and stuff like this from the top to the bottom. The one thing that I would draw attention to is the, the charge range in the volume on the bottom. So that's, that's actually water rates per thousand gallons. So if you look at other adjacent municipalities, you can kind of see where we fall into comparison. The one municipality that does fall below us is Green Bay, and one of the reasons for that is they are essentially the, the water producer. You know, so they're essentially the first man on the totem pole, and then we're kind of a wholesale customer that purchases from them. But with that, you can see some adjacent municipalities of similar size. You know, excluding Green Bay, you can see Bellevue, DePere, Alloway, Howard, where their rates fall currently, so.
Brian, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Which one of these communities actually go to Manitowoc? I know Alloway does for sure, because that would impact that as well.
Yeah, so DePere is, Alloway is, Bellevue, I'm not certain.
Howard is as well.
Howard is as well. So we're, we're the only ones on that spreadsheet. The one thing that I would say, so Howard, or Hobart is also part of Green Bay, but they purchase from us. So along with Wrightstown. I'm not quite certain, Al, if you're able to chime in, who else buys water from the city of Green Bay?
Hobart, Hobart's actually only a portion of them. They buy a few less, but they're industrial park.
And then, and then like Town of Lawrence, they're also through that Manitowoc one. And then Wrightstown, we actually don't sell to them. They buy direct from Green Bay, but they use our pipes as, so we charge them a wheeling fee. So they're actually not purchasing from us water.
So if we compare to ones that are on Green Bay, it's smaller communities that maybe come through us then. So to compare apple to apples, it might be harder, and that's why we have the ones that go to Manitowoc on here.
Correct. And for Hobart, there wasn't information available for some of their other utilities, which is why I didn't include them. And the townships will be on a different, the townships will operate with a different structure. So the costs often aren't as equivalent as the nearby municipalities, even though they're on a different water supplier.
Okay, thank you.
So for the sanitary utility funding, the new water increase this year was a thirty percent fixed rate. And then five and a half to seven point five percent increases will be seen annually over the next ten years. And so that equates to about four to six percent increase for the village. I believe the new water costs represent about eighty-five percent of the expenses for the village on the sanitary sewer side. And so the increases on the sanitary sewer are really mostly driven by new water, where the village isn't going to have a lot of control over that. The only two alternatives provided here, so the top alternative shows if the village were to add a two percent increase on top of what new water does, whatever that is, that would be sufficient to fund the projects and keep the cash reserve in a decent standing. You'll see between two thousand and twenty-seven and two thousand and thirty-one, it dips down a little bit, but overall it's in decent shape. Versus an alternative two, if the village were only to add one percent to that, then you start to see the cash reserve get down below twenty percent, down to about ten percent by the time you hit two thousand and thirty-five and two thousand and thirty-six. So a two percent increase on top of new water would be enough to provide the funding required for the CIP projects. And typically we'll recommend incremental increases steadily, if at all possible, over trying to do weight and do larger increases or jumps.
Yeah, so there's a, there's obviously a, a lot of numbers that we're looking at here. So the, the main focus I would draw your eye on is the, the rate increases that are shown in yellow. So the first row in yellow, those are essentially the proposed rate increases. And then jump to the very bottom row of each one of those alternatives, that's where you see the, the big change in the cash on hand. So for example, you look at alternative number one, that shows essentially an eight percent increase across the board, across all years. You can see on the bottom, your, your cash on hand percentages, you know, so you're at fifty-two, forty-five, and then you start dropping below that desirable forty percent cash on hand. If you were to do a seven percent increase over the course of the next ten years, you would, you would essentially dip below. There's, there's areas in there, you can see we dropped down to about a twenty percent cash on hand, which is less than desirable. You'll try to stick at that forty percent cash on hand as a part of your O and M expenses. So even though you're saving that, that percent, there's also, you know, the, the risk that you're going to be faced against with having the additional, or the, the lesser amount of cash on hand. So say you have a large emergency or something like that, you may not have the funding available. You'd essentially be kind of whittling away at that funding if you stick at that seven percent. Here's a similar type of slide. I can say that all these individuals do send their sewer to new water, so this is a pretty good comparison. With that, I'd probably more focus, you can definitely look at the table on, on the left. The table on the right is, is a bit better breakdown of cost per thousand gallons. So you can see we are definitely the cheapest, not saying that we need to be, you know, the most expensive either. We, we're just showing just a comparison because we know it's definitely something that we need to make sure that we're staying in, in a, you know, similar spot as other municipalities. So with that, the table on the left is just your, your standard charges regardless of what your usage is. It's just based on your water meter size is what determines your, your monthly service charges.
So then moving into storm utilities, so the village storm utility was established in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twelve, and this is, there hasn't, haven't been any increases to the storm utility since that point. And this is an area where the costs are increasing faster than other utilities due to regulatory requirements. A lot of the ponds that are being built within the village are because of regulatory requirements. Those have to, have to be installed, and those are significant costs. And then again, looking at design capacity requirements increasing, where the size storm that is designed for is being, is increasing over time. And so you're seeing significantly larger facilities required than were in the past. And so all of these are adding up to significant increases that'll be needed to fund upcoming storm water needs. So, and this is one where you'll see on the next slide, the village is significantly lower than the surrounding communities for their current cost. But the village is going to need a very significant increase in revenue for the storm utility, just because it's operating at a, at a very low number relative to the projects that'll be, or the needs of the village itself. So outside of the CIP are the other storm utility costs are driving this significantly. But you'll see the top alternative looks at doing a fifty percent rate increase next year, and then ten percent rate increases over the next four years, and then three and a half percent increases. And so for all of these utilities, if you can establish those rates to be a bit higher initially, then you can build up to where you need to, where you can use much lower rates going forward. The second alternative looks at if you space those out a little bit more, you could do a twenty-five percent increase next year, a twenty-five percent increase in two thousand and twenty-six, and a twenty-five percent increase in two thousand and twenty-seven. And so that would space it out a little bit more, so it'd be less of an impact in one year. So either, either of these alternatives would be feasible. It's just which would be the preferred option to go.
Kevin or Brian, is there any funding available for ponds through, like DNR, that have been considered with this? And I know you can't always get them, but has that been taken into consideration of these costs at all?
Yeah, Steve, I'm going to open up the floor for you because we, we were able to get some grants to support some of our projects. So Steve, maybe if you want to touch on that?
The grant applications is pretty typical. We try to go for those every two years when they come out, and we've been really successful over the years. Typically, like most of our ponds, we've gotten grant money for the ones we've built since the utility was formed. The numbers here you see, though, did not take any kind of grant money into effect.
Should we? Or can we, or wouldn't?
Excuse me, in the grand scheme of things, the grant funding, what, were we two hundred and twenty thousand?
Yeah, that'd be the most. Yeah, so if you have a pond cost, say five hundred thousand, you know, you could get two hundred and fifty, maybe half of that for the construction. But then, you know, land value, that's where we're really getting hit up now with, with costs is the purchasing property. You know, so it's, you offset, the grant money for land purchases, like maximum fifty thousand. So it's not, it's helping, but obviously, but not nearly the cost of what the land is.
Which is one thing that.
Reserve, right?
So I think.
Help you in the cash reserve area then?
It, it may. So it obviously is a net benefit to the overall capital expense that gets more or less kind of, you know, depreciated on that, on that cash flow component. So yeah, so you have a million dollar pond project, and let's say the DNR grant provides fifty percent proceeds to that project. That is an offset to that overall cost that would be reflected on that overall spreadsheet. So it wouldn't necessarily go towards operations and maintenance of the facilities. It would be to the construction of those new pieces of infrastructure, if you will.
And that's the sort of thing, if, if the funding was significant, the rates could be adjusted going forward. The biggest thing is there's a pretty significant increase required to get kind of up to speed with the stormwater projects that are being required on an annual basis.
So stormwater charges, it's based on your amount of impervious surface, has nothing to do with, you know, amount of usage. It's more of just how much impervious surface you have on your parcel. The greater amount of impervious surface, of course, drives up that, that rate. You can see the rate in comparison to a lot of the other adjacent municipalities. Yeah, with that, we'll carry on.
So then in terms of the long-term CIP plan, so we've got the ten-year CIP plan pretty well established from two thousand and twenty-seven to two thousand and thirty-six. And then the next thirty years are just looking at other water main needs and then coordinating with roadway projects to get an idea of what would be required moving forward. And that's where, as you move through this ten-year CIP, you look at, when you start getting close to the next phase, look at honing in a little bit more on that and adjusting based on things that have happened over those next ten years. But it would be looking to, these rate increases would be looking to set the stage to be able to move forward this, keep these projects funded, and then not have to go out for borrowing or other more expensive options to fund these.
So Brian, have you cross-referenced this with the age of roadways? And how does, how does that align with, with the replacement of the, of the storm sewers and the water mains and things?
Yeah, so the way that we have our capital improvement plan set up is, when a project's included, it generally includes a full replacement of water sewer and storm. At that point in time, we'll definitely televise a storm sewer, you know, make sure, televise storm sewer and sanitary sewer. You know, see if the condition, likely it'll need to be replaced, but it's all things that we'll, we'll definitely look at when we start really scoping the projects in greater detail. Most likely, all, all three will need to be replaced as part of the reconstruct. So best comparable to that is, you know, let's say a Morris Ave that we did on Oneida. At that point in time, not only did we need to upsize the water main, but the storm sewer was not sized appropriately. Sanitary sewer was not the correct size. So we'd, we'd look at all aspects of it to make sure that we're not leaving something in the ground that we may need to, you know, upsize and then tear up a brand new road that we just redid, so.
So I guess where my questions coming from is, you know, we've phased out where we're at with the water mains and, and that. We're saying, you know, this percentage, thirty-some percent, you know, is this many years old, this percentage. Have we done the same thing with the roads and then tried to align those?
We did. Yep, so we, we looked at the Paser rating, which is a, a system that we use to rate the pavement condition. Based on that, that helped us to figure out what projects fall in what years. You know, based on, you know, there's essentially you got the four different things. So you got the age of the, the water, the age of the sewer, age of the storm water, and then the pavement condition. So it's, it's all things that we factored into the equation to try to figure out which projects fell in what year. And then after that, we, we drilled it down even further to figure out, you know, is there a way that we can better balance? You know, so that dollar amount every year is, is similar. So a project may slide forward or slide back a couple of years, but it, it might be a factor of trying to balance what those cash, what cash is needed from what utility at, at a given year.
So the, the public works projects down on, on the bottom of these, of this big sheet that you created then, Brian, that's kind of what you're referring to there. That's why you're kind of phasing those out. Based on that, would I just?
Yes, yep, that's correct. Some, some of those consider all that. If you go to the second page, the street corridor projects, that's where it really gets into, you know, what, what road reconstruct projects fall when.
Yeah, and the first phase of this was looking at water main age and coordinating it with road condition to try to, to time those together as well as possible. So for a lot of these, it's as long as we're replacing it within a certain timeframe, we can slide things or move them around as appropriate. So we're not ripping into roadways that were recently replaced.
Yeah, that, that's one aspect that Steve and I, we have communication when we're putting together our mill pave plans to make sure that we're not, say, mill paving a road, and then two years later, we're going to do a full reconstruct. So there's a lot of different aspects that go into the equations to make sure that we're, we're getting a full lifespan out of our roads and utilities. So with that, that is all that Kevin has for a presentation. We can, I don't know, Joel, if you want us to just continue to leave the floor open for comments, questions? I can definitely go back to any of the slides if we want to relook at any of the slides, or I can get into the details of the sheets that I had handed out. You know, because I, I know that that's kind of, we're a lot of times interested in what does it look like for our, our everyday user, as how much it's going to impact them, so.
Does anybody have any comments, question? I mean, the increases definitely are, are given to us, so we don't really have a choice. There was a time where we tried to absorb them, and that just really comes back to bite you, you know. So I guess I'd rather, you know, have somebody take a, an eight percent increase as opposed to four years from now, a thirty-two percent increase, you know, so.
Did you guys have a recommendation on storm? If you did, I didn't catch it, like which alternate you were leaning towards?
Ultimately, you'll notice in the, the sheet that I handed out, I showed, I showed alternative one and alternative two. One of them has storm being at fifty. One of them has storm being at 50%, the other one has storm being at 25%. We don't have a strong preference one way or another. The one thing that the one thing that I should say is it really does vary a little bit. The if you look at the very bottom row of what's on your screen, that's that's cash on hand as a percentage of your ONM. So you can notice that, you know, if you drop down your cash on hand in 2027, drops down to 5%. If you do 25% increases for the next three years, or if you do that 50% and then the 10s, you don't drop below that 27%. So it's it's all just a matter of how comfortable are we, you know, running down our our cash on hand down to that 5%? So generally, you're not going to have any major, you know, failures like you could in a in in stormwater that you could in a water system, but you still could. You could have a pipe failure, stuff like that. But I I wouldn't advise going all the way down to a 5% cash on hand. But it's ultimately a decision that I'm going to leave up to the board.
I think Brian also has an additional spreadsheet that wasn't part of the main presentation, but we can kind of go through that. So Brian, if you wouldn't mind pulling that up. What what that spreadsheet is, that that kind of provides a scenario of different examples or alternatives for changes to the rate structure for a typical residential consumer for services. So that I think Brian will eventually kind of show it up. And it provides an alternative one and alternative two. Essentially, those are based on the consumption of about 15,000 gallons of water for a typical residential customer. And then alternative one describes what that pass-through would be for water. So anticipate, I think it's a 12% increase on the water side for that first year, if I'm not mistaken?
It's 14.
14%, excuse me. And then the sewer charge would be an 8% increase, so sanitary an 8%. And stormwater would be that that kind of ripped the Band-Aid off, 50% increase on the front end. And so you can see that from a current charges standpoint, the typical quarterly bill for that residential household is $232.95. With those different various rate increases for water sewer, storm, or sanitary storm, would go to 255.41. Ultimately, alternative two keeps everything status quo with the exception of, excuse me, status quo from alternative one, but keeps the the pass-through rate increase on the water side, increases of sewer rate, sanitary sewer rate of 8%, but reduces that storm sewer rate increase from 50% to 25%. And that ultimately shaves a a couple few dollars off of that overall increase. So it gets it to 251.97. At least that's on my sheet. I don't know, did you change anything before today's meeting?
No, no, that that's exactly it. For water, that PWCA is the purchase water clause adjustment. That's essentially, think of that as being a pass-through. That's the fancy acronym that the the PSC uses. So essentially, we're taking 43 43 cents per thousand gallons and passing that. So that's what we're getting from Green Bay as an increase. We're just passing that right through. There's no additional money or no additional revenue. I guess there is additional revenue, but essentially, it's it's going to be a wash. There there is no benefit to it. I would say, so we we have 90 days from the time that Green Bay Water received their final decision on the rates. So we have until October 22nd to get that application in. So time is of the essence. So we have, you know, essentially two weeks that we'll have to get that application together and into the PSC in order to have that review to see if we're eligible for that purchase water clause adjustment. Sewer is that 8%, like Joel said, storm is 25%. We ultimately, this, these are examples of a quarterly bill. We just kind of used average numbers of what our average consumer uses and you can see what the differences are.
So again, this is based on a a scenario. This is not precise calculation for an individual user, so just careful with that. So if you tell your constituents, if if this were to be approved, that, oh, your bill's going to go up $22. It may if it's around 15,000 gallons of usage and they have the same metering size. Ultimately, under our scenario, you're looking at a roughly 22, $22.50 increase under alternative one and about a $19 increase on alternative two per quarter.
I don't understand. That's a quarterly chart.
That's a quarterly adjustment, yep. So what you're looking at is roughly $90 per year under alternative one and $76 for alternative two.
And and definitely remember, this is just for residential houses. So commercial will be more greatly impacted because they use more and they have more impervious surface. So just something to keep in mind.
From the on the stormwater side, what are you anticipating? I'm I'm looking at the cash reserve. What are you anticipating, you know, obviously, things can break this, but major projects, new ponds, things like that is what I'm looking at. What are you anticipating we're going to be drawing out of that cash reserve?
Yeah, that that's a very good question. And Steve, I'll speak on this, and if I miss something, make sure you fill in. I'm sorry, our biggest expense, yes, is the construction of ponds. So we're currently working through hopefully acquiring some land for the Willard Pond, which is a ShopCo property that you guys may recall, we spoke about it a few months ago. But the biggest cost that we're seeing is replacement of culverts. So unfortunately, we have some large culverts that go through the industrial park. And unfortunately, those culverts are at the end of their life. So those culverts are about $650,000 apiece and they all could ultimately be replaced today. They're rotted to the point where there's no floor left in them. So it's mainly large culvert replacements and pond construction. So Steve, I don't know. And then following that, starting in 2027 would be part of the roadway reconstruct. So one of the projects that we have in 2027 is Morris from Home Grant over to Ashland. That has a very, very large stormwater pipe under it. So I think costs alone of that stormwater pipe are over $1 million just to get that water down to that Ashland pond. So Steve, I don't know if you want to add anything else?
Yeah, I guess the only thing I could add just to the conversation is when the utility was started back in 2012, the focus was on water quality. You know, so the rate was established, assuming we were going to meet DNR total suspended solids requirements. So we set up, you know, there was a CIP done back then. But things, you know, as expenses risen in the last, you know, 10 to 15 years and then the addition of, you know, the reconstruct projects, that wasn't on the radar back then, you know. So that really, you know, brought the focus on this, the CIP now, brought the focus on, you know, replacing a lot of this aging storm sewer.
Yeah, that that would lead me to believe that I would, I personally like the 50% for the storm because I can see that there's, there could be some major projects popping up all of a sudden. And that's why we would not want our cash reserves to be too low because especially in the industrial park, they start failing, you might have boom, 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 and roads are collapsing. And they got to be done right now, you know, if our cash reserve is down, then we're borrowing money again, and that's not a good thing.
Yeah, that's a good point, Jay. I know sometimes two of these opportunities with to buy land, you know, they just kind of necessarily fall in our lap, but sometimes that does happen. And we need to have that cash reserve so that those opportunities do come up to buy land for ponds and whatnot. If we don't have the money, then it's, yeah, that's a whole nother discussion on borrowing.
You know, we had that discussion, Jay, this this spring when we found out that we had four culverts that were in really bad shape. And I mean, there's communities that are literally buying up homes and they will tear them down to put in a pond. So, you know, when we do have the opportunity to purchase land, I think we have to have the money in in at hand to buy it.
And it's not a tremendous change. I'm, you know, I'm I'm really focused on the residents. That's why I thank you, Brian, for putting this together. That particular piece of this is the smaller piece of the pie. I I think that that really saves us. A lot of the other ones, we don't really have any control over. It's kind of like, that's the way it's going to be.
Right, I agree.
Yeah, the one the one thing that I would talk, you know, more on is, you know, the not only the importance of the things in the next year or two, but just long-term, you know, starting to look at, you know, infrastructure replacement. We've done a really, really good job of maintaining what's out there. You know that, you can see that when we drive through our roads in comparison to other municipalities. I would hate for it to be, see that we start slipping. I want to make sure that we we stay on top of it. You know, things are top-notch for, you know, the Green Bay area when you look at our infrastructure in comparison to others. And I think we want to stay there. I mean, we've we've done everything we could to to be there. So let's continue to, you know, push forward with the capital improvement plan to make sure that we're keeping things in good condition.
And you just look at the timber project this year. I'm sure that wasn't anticipated. And do you have a final cost on that?
We don't have a final cost. It'll be, Steve, you can cut me off, but with engineering, we'll probably be around 400,000, I would say.
Yeah, something in that ballpark.
Yep, so and and timber, I mean, that's a good example. I mean, holes in the in the pipe, pipes starting to collapse, caught it in time where, you know, we really didn't see any sort of major impacts, you know, on the surface, but it could have been really bad. But we got ahead of it and we're making sure, you'll you'll notice that, you know, a culvert like that was an old corrugated metal pipe replacing with concrete, so hopefully the lifespan is a little bit longer. You're digging down 20 feet, takes a long time to get down there, might as well put something in the ground that's going to last a long time. So just making sure that we're being conscientious of, you know, long-term decisions to make sure that our investments are well worth it.
Okay, anybody else have any comments?
Brian, the basically the reason for this meeting here today is what rate we want to charge percentage and what we got left in the bank is basically the two questions that you're asking.
Yeah, yep, definitely we want to just figure out how we're going to, you know, if we if we adjust our rates, if we if that's the desire to do, to make sure that we keep enough cash on hand so we're staying fiscally responsible.
We've had this discussion several times. It always ended up what the residents are going to pay. But I think if we go the cheap way with nothing in the bank, it's going to cost them more when a big thing happens. In our aging community, I think it's best that we have the money in order to take care of something that does pop up that is unforeseen.
Right, and and these are, they're quarterly charges. I'm not going to say that it's not, you know, a lot of money, but, you know, if you break it up by the month, you know, it's maybe a little bit more, you know, digestible, you know, $7 a month. It's not going to say it's cheap, but.
If you want convenience, you got to pay for it.
Okay, so this, do we need a a motion on any of this?
So what what you have is you have two two items. One is just basically the presentation and more of that kind of open forum, that work session kind of feel, if you will. And that's why we wanted to have this special meeting so that you could kind of ask more more discerning type questions that maybe you feel a little bit less comfortable doing, kind of in a regular village board meeting. So that was under action or item number five A. Under five B, there are three separate resolutions that can be adopted in a singular motion. So there are three separate resolutions. They can be taken up individually, of course, if you desire, or they can be adopted under one singular motion. Brian has articulated this already, but I just want to reconfirm that on the water side, in order to take the full pass-through on the wholesale price from Green Bay to us, that does have a timeline requirement and conditions by the PSC. So we are up a kind of against a timeline window. I think theoretically, we we do have a couple couple more weeks before we hit our 90-day window. But obviously, we want to try to make sure we have our i's dotted and t's crossed before we submit that formal application to the PSC to do the pass-through. That would be under resolution 10-124. So that talks about those rate increases. That would be the full pass-through of rate increases that we saw from Green Bay Water.
Do you think, I'm sorry, Joel, do you think there'll be any concern with the PSC with what we're asking for?
Yeah, so I've already been in contact with the PSC, made them aware that this is something that I'm bringing in front of the village board. They're aware of it. They have not expressed any concerns. The individual that I was speaking with, he is within, knew within his role, but did check with his supervisor. And he, I'd let him know to call me back if there was anything that we should be alarmed of, and I did not receive a call back. So with that, like like Joel said, so it's an equation. We can't really adjust the equation. It's more of just a yes or no. We, it's 43 cents per thousand gallons. Either we do it or we don't, because they they provide the equation. It's right in our tariff sheets. We can't say, hey, we want to do half of the purchase water clause adjustment. It it's either we're all in or all out.
And and if we are all out, so let's say we don't want to follow through on the pass-through, well, then that basically creates, obviously, as as Kevin and Brian have articulated, some of the cash crunch on the water utility side doesn't prohibit your ability to do a future rate increase through either a simplified case or a conventional case. However, if you choose not to do the pass-through, that may expedite the need for the utility then to do a conventional or simplified rate case sooner than what Kevin has described in this presentation.
I think to make it just simpler from a motion and consumption standpoint here is that we'll do them separately. And I'll make the motion to approve resolution 10-1-2024 for the pass-through of the increase in the water.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 10-1-24. Any other comments, concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
And then I will make a motion to for resolution 10-2-2024 to increase the sewage rate by 8%.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 10-2-24 with the 8% increase. Any other comments, concerns?
I'll just add a point of clarification. So under the resolution right now, it does indicate rates by 7% in the 2024. So as as it was shown in your packet, you're changing that 7% to 8%. So just a clarification and point of emphasis for the board's consideration.
Agreed.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on that. Does everybody understand?
Is Brian understanding of that?
Yes, yep, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And then I will make a motion for resolution 10-3-2024 for the stormwater rate to increase that to 50%.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 10-3-24, which increases the stormwater rate at the beginning by 50%. Does everybody understand that? Any concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, items for next agenda.
I also still want to say thank you, guys. Nice job. I'll be honest, when I first started reading through it, it I it was kind of spinning my heads. But the way you presented it today and the additional sheets very much helped, so thank you.
It's a lot of information, so I I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to us. I know it's kind of painful to listen to us talk on and numbers and stuff like that and details, but we do want to make sure that we're being transparent.
It's nice to have this type of an increase as opposed to having to go to the PSC because we just a couple of years ago had to do that after 13 or 14 years, and it's not fun, so.
Just a couple of quick reminders since we're on this item. So next village board meeting is our regularly scheduled date, October 22nd. But just remember that the board approved adjusting the start time to that meeting. So normally, we start at 6:00 PM. We will meet at 12:00 noon. That will be our regular business agenda, so expect the the normal order of business, if you will. We do have some some notes for next month, for the month of November. So just a reminder that the general election is on Tuesday, November 5th. Generally, committee meetings are going to get shuffled on that night, so we have a variety of different committee meetings. Marcus is going to reach out to the collective group to determine what those best meeting dates are going to be to shuffle for that general election. Tuesday, November 12th is the standard date that we pick for the joint finance personnel and village board meeting for the for the budget workshop. So just be advised that we'll have that on Tuesday, November 12th. I believe that starts at 5:00 PM. So we'll be here under that meeting. I believe that starts at 5:00 PM, so we'll be here under that meeting. And then finally, for the month of November, Thanksgiving is, of course, the fourth Thursday of the month. That puts it on November 28th. Village Board would normally be scheduled for November 26th. So if there's a desire from the board to change that date, let us know, and we can prepare an action item for the board to take action on that at the, at the next meeting. Otherwise, if that Tuesday night works for the board, then that's fine, too. But if there is a need or a desire to change that date under our municipal code, we'll have to take action on that change.
So I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Leave this meeting.
We have a motion by Jay to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Kelly. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.